It is 5:31 on April 22, 2025. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the Morton County Commission to order. Our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll do the roll call. Commissioner Morell.
Here.
Commissioner Tocash.
Here.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
And myself, Commissioner Bame. Commissioner Buckley is absent tonight. We also have, excuse me, we have State's Attorney copy and Sheriff Kirkman in the back. Next would be the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next would be the minutes from the previous meeting on April 10, 2025, from the Morton County Commission Regular Meeting.
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the April 10, 2025, regular meeting of the Morton County Commission. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I had bills this month, went through the bills this afternoon, didn't see any problems. I move that we approve the bills and payroll.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the bills and payroll. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Morell.
Yes.
Commissioner Tocash.
Yes.
Commissioner Zachmeyer.
Yes.
And myself, yes, motion carries. There we go, through the first part of our agenda, and we will move right into number one, which will be Don LaFleur and our Tax Director with Abatements.
Okay, like last week, we only have homestead and veterans credits to deal with tonight, so the first ones up are the homestead abatements. Those are 6787 through 6794. There was three of them for the City of Mandan for 2024. New Salem had the same person doing 23 and 24, so one each in those years. For the mobile homes, we had two of them for 2024 and one for 2025. The suggested motion is on page two there.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of homestead abatements 6787 through 6789, City of Mandan, 2024, 6790, City of New Salem, 2023, 6791, City of New Salem, 2024, 6792, 6793, Mobile Homes, 2024, 6794, Mobile Homes, 2025.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve abatements 6787 through 6794, as presented by Commissioner Tocash. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, for the veterans credits, I had to do this a little bit weird. If you remember last meeting, we had veterans credits for the county. The city runs the veterans credits through the city commission, so that's why I had to kind of separate them, because they separated them over there on the city side, but we'll take them in one motion. It's just kind of scattered throughout here, so. Those are abatements 6795 through 6802. The first one up is for 812 Kittle Trail Southwest. They had an abatement for 23 and 24. The next one up, which is on page five, this is for 2904 Bay Shore Boulevard.
Bend.
They also had an abatement for 23 and 24. And the next one up, which is on page seven, that is for 510 Eighth Avenue Southwest. They just had 2024. And the next one, which is on page nine, that is for 4520 Sundancer Loop. That is just for 2024. And then we had on page 11, 2513, 34th Avenue Southeast. That is just for 2024. And then on page 13, there is 3611 Woodbend Drive. That is just for 2024, and that should be all of them. On page 15 is the veterans credit brochure, and then at the bottom of that brochure is the recommended motion to approve all those.
For the abatement on page five, you said Boulevard. It's actually Bend, so it's correct in the minutes.
I just said it wrong.
Yeah, you just said it wrong. Just that way we don't have to correct it later.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, motion, we approve veterans' abatement number 6795 through 6802 for veterans' credit abatements, as discussed by our Tax Assessor's Office.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve abatements 6795 through 6802, as discussed by our tax assessor. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next up, we have John, our Morton County Engineer. And you're the reason for the paper tonight, right?
That is correct, yes. Good evening, Commissioners and Deputy Auditor. I'm before you this evening with two requests for approval of resolution of necessity for two subdivisions for a special assessment. And the first is for, it'll be two separate motions. The first one would be for the resolution of necessity and establish a date for a public hearing for Ensel subdivisions 2 through 9 for their specialist assessment district. They have gone around, they've had sponsors, collected signatures, they've collected 66 property owners out of 104, so they meet the 60% threshold. And the special assessment will be for patching and overlay of the roads in their subdivision. It'll be a two-inch hot mix bituminous pavement. The Morton County Special Assessment Screening Committee met on April 10 and recommended approval. In your packet, you would have a copy of the petition, the recap of the signatures, an owner list, and applicable sections of the North Dakota Century Code. And I would recommend that we approve the resolution of necessity for Project 2586 and establish a public hearing date of May 27 before this commission at 6:15 in the evening for the protest period. Once this resolution of necessity is approved, I will send out a letter to all of the property owners advising them of the protest period and how they can protest and advise them of the public hearing that evening, and that they can protest by letter or by appearing at the public hearing, and that will also be published in the newspaper as required by the Century Code, the two times, with the second time being at least 10 days before the public hearing. So with that, I'd be open to any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions for John?
I had to double-check that date. Somebody asked to be on the May 24 meeting on the agenda.
Oh.
And I was like, okay, but it is the 27th. I double-checked, you're right.
Okay.
I'll get ahold of that other person.
Commissioners, have any questions, or are you ready for a motion? I think we have one down here, but...
One other thing I might add is, if this goes through and is approved, and it doesn't protest out, as with the next one, it will be combined with Montani subdivision, which was approved last November, and we will put the plans together and bid them as a group. That's what encouraged, I sent out letters trying to get these people to act at this time, because we'll group them all together. That'll save on mobilization, that'll increase our unit, you know, tonnage of asphalt, and hopefully get a much lower cost than if we did this individually. And then also, for your information, we have a public meeting at the Highway Department next Tuesday for Summer Drive, which is another Ensel subdivision on the west side of the highway. So there's a potential for four of these being put together for this summer. So, but that one's just in the preliminary stages. They haven't even gotten their signatures yet for that one, so.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution of necessity for Ensel subdivision Project 2586 for the patching and overlay of pavement with a two-inch hot mix bituminous pavement, as required by North Dakota Century Code 40-22-17, scheduling a public hearing in the Morton County Commission Meeting Room on May 27, 2025, at 6:15 PM.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution of necessity and establish the date for public hearing of May 27 for the Ensel subdivisions 2nd through 9th Special Assessment District. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
All right, the next one is for Ensel's 11th, and the process was the same. They had 10 property owners, and they have six that signed the petition, so they meet the 60% threshold. And it too went before the Special Assessment Screening Committee on April 10, and the screening committee recommended approval. And once again, it'll be the same process, it'll be advertised in the paper for the same period and the same number of times, and I'll be sending letters out to the property owners in this subdivision as well, advising them of the protest period and the various options if they do wish to protest. And so with that, everything else would be the same as far as putting it all together and putting the plans together, so.
How many lots are out in?
There are 10.
10, so...
And they got six, so we are right at the threshold.
Okay.
And they're aware of that. I have advised the sponsors when they turned everything in that they are just on the threshold. If they get anybody who defects, it won't go, so they're advised.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution of necessity for Ensel 11th subdivision, Project 2587, construction of pavement consisting of four-inch hot mix bituminous pavement, as required by North Dakota Century Code 40-22-17, scheduled, and scheduled a public hearing at the Morton County Commission Meeting on May 27, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution of necessity and establish a date of May 27 for public hearing of Ensel 11th subdivision Special Assessment District. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And as I said, we'll have that public meeting next week, and we may do this one more time this summer, and then after we get done with this, I'll be probably sending out letters to a number of other subdivisions that have inquired about either paving or gravel in the past, and see if we can't do this again next year with two or three subdivisions.
Get them together and save some money.
Yes, so, thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, next on the agenda is Auditor Kathy. Did Don leave you with anything? Nope. All right. Commissioners, do you have anything else? I know I threw in the packet the library report for April from our meeting last night. Anybody's interested in looking at that, or if you have any questions, you can catch And with that, we have a scheduled public hearing at 6 o'clock, which is still 13 minutes away, and I can't and won't start that until 6:00 PM. To move right into our 6:00 PM public hearing on the second reading of the resolution of PZ 25-04 to extend the moratorium on the construction of habitable structures within Zone 1 of the Harmon Lake Dam Breach Inundation Overlay District. And at this time, we will ask, Commissioner Zachmeyer has graciously agreed to be the reader of the second reading.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I'm just opening up that file to get to that page.
Mr. Zachmeyer, want to make sure... Make sure you're close to your mic there, please.
Yes.
And your mic is on.
From my perspective, at this point, Heidi, there's nobody online?
There is one person online, but I, there's no chatter, and he tells me that he's wanting to speak, so.
Yep, but I know he's there, I can ask if...
Okay.
When the time comes, I will ask.
Yeah.
We're ready, whatever you are.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, just a brief summary of how we got here. The current Zone 1, which is always the one that is most looked at, there's several zones, but Zone 1 is probably considered to be the most hazardous for the Harmon Lake Dam breach area, if there ever was an emergency release, or if the dam would breach or fail. Zone 1 is the most hazardous, and all the information we have received from state water, Morton County Water, is that that particular zone should never have any housing or habitable structures in it because of the public safety risk. Also, the thing to remember about Zone 1 is it wasn't just under danger for things that occur from Harmon Lake, which is the main focus of why we're here. It is also an area that is under danger from emergency release from Garrison Dam along the Missouri River. Zone 1 was underwater in 2011 for approximately three months, and that was due to flooding outside of what would have occurred with Harmon Lake. In 2024, the state released an updated dam safety standards policy, as well as a legacy dams policy. There was no new guidance in that policy to help better guide us in these decisions. Therefore, it leaves where does the county stand? There's no doubt about it, it can create, for the average property owner, there is an argument there, is this an infringement on private property rights? And it probably is. On the other hand, that whole area and why the dam was built was to protect agriculture. During heavy spring runoffs, extremely heavy rains, there'd be a lot of water damage to crops, or it would delay getting into the fields, plus the damage you'd have to fix from the runoff, where this dam stopped a lot of that coming off that creek. Growing up, we used to go up there in the spring, I saw the water, all those fields would be underwater, and it would take a long time to get them to dry out before you could get into the field to plant a crop. So the dam is doing exactly what it is designed to do. It is, was designed and was expected to protect agricultural interests. So another part would be is a moratorium. No moratorium is supposed to go into perpetuity, but this moratorium is set for every two years. That way, the Water Board, Morton County Water Board, assistance of soil conservation, assistance of the state, hopefully then every two years, is there a different guideline? Has something changed to allow us to lift the entire moratorium? So this is not a permanent moratorium, because you cannot have one that goes permanently, but every two years, so far, has been reasonable to try to get guidance from state engineer and how to move forward in this zone. Morton County Water Resource District continuously studies this, they understand all the political aspects of it as far as individual property rights, but they also understand that this dam is there to protect agricultural interests, and eventually also, it will protect human During 2011, the county spent a lot of money trying to get into this area. Floodwaters came from a different direction, doesn't matter, the whole area was underwater, and it was expensive. Roads became inundated, boats had to be used. There's a reason for this zone. And again, I know that this is Harmon Lake, but it also comes from the Missouri River. Did have a public hearing at Planning and Zoning Commission, there was concerns about imposition on private property rights, and cannot deny that. But then, on the other hand, if the county was to allow building in there, the federal government, state government, all of a sudden will say, build that dam to high risk, and that's going to be massively expensive and cost prohibitive. And the same landowners down there would be looking at different special assessments to try to bring it up to that high risk, because they'd be the benefit. And then furthermore is the reminder, just because you have a high hazard dam doesn't mean you are protected from flooding. During 2011, visiting with the Corps of Engineers, they continuously pointed out that a dam is to control flooding, not to eliminate it. There was some discussion when it came to Griner Park about how the county could take ownership of it, but even the Corps of Engineers said, even if we would take ownership of it from them, and they signed it over, they would make sure there's a flood easement so that they could flood it when they had to. This same land is in the same position. So just increasing it to a high hazard dam at such a massive expense is cost prohibitive, and it still doesn't mean that this land can't be flooded. The other part then is to operate the dam as more or less a high-end storm sewer system, allow all the water to drain out, and set the discharge at a certain level. If there was a heavy spring runoff, a heavy rain, the dam would capture it and then slowly filter it out to the Missouri River. Cannot operate it like that either, because that would not stop federal government or the state government from saying that the dam has to be increased to a high hazard. The other part then would be is, what does it do to the overall taxpayer? The overall taxpayer has a recreational facility out there, and how are they going to enjoy it if it's operated as nothing more than a storm sewer system and it becomes a giant mosquito bog? If the county would try to decommission it, there's a very good chance that they would force us to totally remove it at the county expense, and the federal government's going to be wanting to be reimbursed for the money they stuck into the structure. At the public hearing, at Public Planning and Zoning Commission, adopted a resolution recommending that this moratorium continue for another two years. It is also the recommendation of the Morton County Water Resource Board to also extend it for another two years. And being that I've been to both meetings, I have to agree. There is no way the county could afford to take on this type of project, to upgrade that dam to high hazard, and the same property owners, while I may feel bad for them, will never be able to afford the special assessments to try to bring it up to that level. So I would stand for any questions that the Commissioners would have for me.
I do not see any questions, so I guess we would move into the reading of the resolution.
Okay, I have to turn my cursor. Mr. Chairman, second reading of resolution PZ 25-04, a resolution of the County of Morton, North Dakota, to extend a moratorium on the construction of habitable structures within a portion of the probable inundation zone of the Harmon Lake Dam. Whereas, North Dakota Century Code 113301 grants counties the power to regulate property for the purpose of promoting health, safety, morals, public convenience, and general prosperity and public welfare. Whereas, North Dakota Century Code 1133-03 states that the object of the regulatory regulation of property includes the following purposes, amongst others, to protect and guide the development of non-urban areas, to provide for emergency management, and to lessen government expenditures. Whereas, the Harmon Lake Dam Construction Permit Number 1092 issued by the North Dakota State Engineer to Morton County Water Resource District, May 12, 2004, includes a condition number eight, which reads, "The dam has been classified as a medium hazard structure based on current conditions. It is possible that future residential development downstream of the dam could necessitate reclassification to a high hazard. If this occurs, Morton County Water Resource District shall be responsible for the cost of required reconstruction. In order to reduce the likelihood of the dam being reclassified in the future, it is recommended that residential development be restricted in the area indicated on the map provided. In Attachment A, the map shows the area inundated by a freeboard design event breach of 0.5 PMP, and that would also be classified as Zone Number 1." Whereas, reclassification of the Harmon Lake Dam from medium hazard to high hazard would result in the Morton County Water Resource District being required to upgrade the Harmon Lake Dam, and that the cost of the upgrade would be in the tens of millions of dollars. Whereas, the purpose of the original moratorium was to allow the North Dakota Department of Water Resources time to develop objective criteria for what actions or inactions on the part of the Water Resource District could result in the reclassification of the dam from medium hazard to high hazard. And whereas, the North Dakota Department of Water Resources adopted a revised dam safety hazards policy document and a legacy dam policy document in 2024. Whereas, in light of the policy guidance provided by the state, additional time is needed to allow Morton County and the Morton County Water Resource District to work together to develop a comprehensive and permanent policy approach to address the question of habitable development within Zone 1 of the Harmon Lake Dam Breach Inundation Overlay District. Whereas, a map of Zone 1 is kept on file at the Morton County Planning and Zoning Department in electronic format as an ArcGIS map shape file, and that said map will be made available to the public via the Morton County website. to the public via the Morton County website. Whereas, a public hearing regarding an extension of the moratorium was held at a regular meeting of the Morton County Water Board and the Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission on March 26, 2025, and the Morton County Commission held first and second readings of the proposed moratorium extension at their April 10, 2025, and April 22, 2025 regular meeting. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Morton County, North Dakota, that the moratorium on the construction of all habitable structures, including but not limited to stick-built homes, modular homes, mobile homes, and structures with living quarters, is hereby extended to all lands within Zone 1 of Harmon Lake Dam Breach Inundation Zone Overlay District. Be it further resolved that the moratorium extension shall take effect upon final passage, adoption, recording, and publication, and that unless further extended or unless sooner terminated, this moratorium shall expire on April 30, 2027. And this would then be by the order of the Board of Morton County Commissioners this 22nd day of April, 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner Zachmeyer. I will open it up to public comment from the floor in the commission room. There's, we have Sheriff Kirkmire, State's Attorney copy, and our engineer here, so if any of you would like to make a comment. If there's no public comment from the floor in the commission room, I will go to the online, and I, do we have anybody on there other than Security at this point?
So he's on there?
Okay. There, there is one person online. Is that person, does that person want to make a comment? I'll do a second call for comment from online. And I will do the third call for comment from online. Seeing none, I will move back to the room. Second call for comment from the room. And third call for public comment from the room. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public comment. And with that, I will open it up to discussion from the Commissioners at the front of the room.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that should also be mentioned was discussed at Planning and Zoning. This does not stop the construction of buildings to further an agricultural interest. Granaries, equipment sheds, barns, those type of structures will still be permitted. It is about building, buildings that can be habitable.
Correct.
That, that is the, the main portion here. There was some concern, well, you will never ever be allowed to build anything down there, and that is not the case. You would still be able to build any type of building that can have an agricultural Just cannot live in it.
No living quarters, no living quarters. Okay. Any other comments, questions from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion if you're ready.
We are ready. I got head shakes from the other side of the room, so...
Mr. Chairman, move to approve resolution number PZ 25-04 to continue the moratorium on the construction of all habitable structures and structures with living quarters within Zone 1 of the Harmon Lake Dam Breach Zone Overlay District for an additional period of two years ending 4/30/2027, as the moratorium complies with North Dakota Century Code 11-33-03, and that the moratorium protects and guides the development of non-urban areas, provides for emergency management, lessens government expenditures, conserves and develops national natural resources, and provides for the North Dakota Department of Water Resources to establish future updated dam hazard classifications. The moratorium also complies with the North Dakota State Engineer Construction Permit Number 1092. The moratorium does not prohibit or prevent the use of land or buildings for farming or any of the normal incidents of farming as required by North Dakota Century Code
All right. It has been moved and seconded to continue, adopt the resolution to extend the moratorium on development of habitable structures in Zone 1 of the Harmon Lake Dam Breach Inundation Overlay District until April 30, 2027. And Commissioner Zachmeyer, if I would ask that you have that wording to our Auditor's office for correction. I'm not going to try and reread it. It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Is there any other business come before the commission meeting tonight? Seeing none, I declare the meeting adjourned.